Opening the work session for the Gillen County Court meeting. This is June 4, 2025, and we're in the Gillen County Courthouse in Condon today. We will have the flag salute.
I am allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome. First of all, I just wanted to set a theme for today. Let's work together in common ground. Okay? So if we have a theme, let's work on those two things and keep that in mind. It's also about the children we're serving. Okay? All right. I do want to just read a little bit. I don't know if there's many people who are going to comment. There's a few people who are here, potentially some people online. We're going to start with public comment, but just want to clarify. And I'll take ownership of not saying a whole lot about the grant application for the Condon Early Learning Center because we talked about tabling it, just discussing it today. So there wasn't a lot of detail at that prior meeting. All we did was table the application. We didn't vote not to fund anything, and I just want to clarify that. Well, now open public comment. I encourage open and respectful and civil public comment. You'll each have three minutes with a running clock. I don't know if we got that going. For your assistance, although freedom of speech is just that, it's free. We hope that those speaking have done their research and express fact-driven statements. You know, I haven't gotten any phone calls about our funding. Would certainly be able to explain that to you if anybody has questions. So wanting you to use your voice, utilize your time, and encourage you to speak. Okay, who would like to begin? Catherine?
Yeah.
Briner?
Good morning.
Morning.
Catherine Briner, City of Condon. I just wanted some clarification first off, and I will just submit my letter. When you put on the work session, it had that it was going to be the Economic Enhancement Ordinance. Does it only have to do with the early childhood line item? Or does it have to do with the whole ordinance?
You can speak on the entire ordinance if you choose.
What's the purpose of yours today?
It was just to be the early education.
Because I just want to make sure that if you're going to talk about the city's distribution, I have a whole other letter on that one.
Oh, no, absolutely not.
So I'm going to, I'm going to submit a letter and basically in support of the early childcare and leaving that line item in the ordinance. But what I wanted to do really quick is, and I will be brief, is 25 years ago, Laura Pryor asked me, Katie Cook, Jeff Bailey, and there were two other people, and I can't recall who they were, to start this childcare process. And what we did was, we started the group. We opened it up in the Baptist church because it was a need then. It's been a need all the way along. And also too is, I, you guys all went to small schools, right? I went to extremely small school. Our classmates were like our brothers and sisters there. So when we're talking about the safety of a certified childcare center, I want to give you a story about one of my, what I consider one of my sisters as a classmate. Her daughter had a baby boy, 10 months old. They had a, they had, uh.
You.
Sorry, they had.
Sorry, not muted. Not muted out there, please. Okay, okay, go ahead.
So as a very good friend of mine, her grandson, they had an in-home babysitter. They're both parents who are teachers in the, on the Oregon coast.
I'm going to stop you. Okay. Because of the interruption, I wasn't, the 10-month-old?
Yes.
I just want to make sure I understand.
I just want to give you a personal story of why it's important to have certified childcare centers. And it's a personal story because as we all know, going to small schools, our classmates were like our brothers and sisters. We may not have liked all of our brothers and sisters, but they were brothers and sisters. My classmates' child, grandchild, was murdered by her, the babysitter. They had an in-home person in. They got a call, they were both teachers, got a call to come home. The baby was not breathing. And when it went to court, the sad part about it was, is the baby was flown to Portland. Its organs were donated and the whole story. And when it came down to sentencing this lady, the only reason that she killed that child was she was having a bad day. When you have a certified childcare center, you have other people that if you are having a bad day, someone else can step in. So I think, other than this personal story, mine on this hand from the city is for recruitment purposes. It has always been important to do it. But I just want the county court to know that it touches people personally. It's not something you hear on this. So I wholeheartedly agree with funding them, what they need to get done. And also not only funding them, but the endowment to help not only the early childcare center, but also anyone in Arlington that wants to serve for childcare center also. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll get the letter. And then we'll go with the next person. Pardon me? Leah, would you be able to step up and get that paper, please, for us? Thank you. Would you like that read?
Go ahead. You go, Margaret.
Okay, Judge Patton, Commissioner Watkins, and Commissioner Wilkins. I'm writing this letter to support the Condon Early Learning Center's grant application for operational funding and for having childcare early learning to remain in the Gillen County Enhancement Ordinance. The City of Condon has been fortunate to have a low employment turnover that as we move forward to recruiting new city staff, three items raised at the top that make an impact to recruit quality candidates, housing, schools, and childcare. Not only do these three items top the list of needs for recruitment, but they have also topped the list on the Condon Can Vision Project. Gillen County Town Halls and multiple studies and reports of Condon over the decades. City of Condon wholeheartedly supports the application for Condon Early Learning Center and to maintain a 20% early learning sustainability line item in the ordinance, which will help all Gillen Counties provide safe, affordable childcare opportunities. Thank you.
Back to you. Okay. All right. And just because Catherine brought this, I just want to clarify. We're just talking about any public comment on the application that anyone wanted to provide since that was put off to today from the prior meeting. And then the Economic Enhancement Ordinance, the 20%. I want everybody to speak. I have no intention of changing that 20% whatsoever. Just want to clarify that. It's just, do we want to change, add the word childcare to the, to that? Is what I was thinking, but we're going to just open that up to discussion. So who's next? Who would like to speak? Go ahead.
I'm assuming we're going to go back and forth about our application, but I thought maybe I would start with just one little thing before we get into that.
Yeah.
Firstly, I am on the same page. I know that we're all on the same page.
Right.
In the souls.
Yes.
I think the word endowment, the clarity on that has caused some confusion. Because as you know, I'm sure, an endowment typically is the sum of money that is invested so that the proceeds can be used to support an organization or a cause. And the principle is not touch. And so that's the kind of endowment that I'm asking for support with so that there's a long-term solution when the funds do run out. So I think in that, we're trying to work together because I'm getting a lot of rhetoric about these funds are going to run out. So we're trying to think of a long-term solution. Because as you can see by looking at our application and our sustainability plan, there's little we can actually do to draw up additional money. If those funds go away, we're still going to be in trouble down the line. So clarification on what that endowment is? Because I hear you keep saying that you've created an endowment. And I think we might be using that word in a different way because if it's a line item to be drawn from yearly, if we're drawing from the principle, my concern is that that's not going to create that long-term security that we're hoping for. And I just wanted to say that that's where some of my confusion has come from. And then when our application was tabled and others were fully funded, I see that there's little left to fund both us and the Arlington Health District. So I imagine my concern.
Right. There could be solutions to that. So we're here to work through solutions, absolutely.
I just wanted to let you know that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. I do want to say that we didn't touch much on the Kelly nonprofit report that was included in your grant application. So I just wanted to make a statement before we get too deep in the weeds about that is that the prior county court contracted with Kelly Nonprofit Consulting, and there was some discussion about whether or not to do that. It happened. There was already a contract in place. And with your grant application, you included a study. And the scope of work that was submitted for Kelly states that the county has a dedication to ensure grant recipients remain strong, stable, and impactful despite the sunsetting of county-led grant funds in the coming year. So that was the vision, what Kelly was going to try to help do. And so that's why I had further questions of what does this report mean? And what solutions can we come to with the suggestions that they made?
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
And hopefully we'll get into that. I mean, and they were really gracious and able to, they threw that together last minute because it was a last-minute change to that application that we would provide a sustainability plan. And ours, the one we had was from 2020.
Okay, so that's the, okay. I was so listening to what she had to say, I didn't think about it being the three minutes. So we'll get, we'll make sure you have plenty of opportunity to speak. Okay? All right. Thank you. Hey, is there anyone else? Anybody else want to speak on? No, no other public comment? Anybody online?
I have a quick question. Is this just for like public comment or like in favor of making sure that the childcare?
Sure. Yeah, you can come up. We do need you to come up though, if you're going to say that.
I know you know who I am, Mandra Richardson. As a parent who has used the center for several years and as a redo, just recently used it, I can't stress enough how important this is for not only Condon, but I'm sure Arlington's going through it too. We're not the only ones. Childcare in the state of Oregon is a pandemic right now. It's awful everywhere. There's a fabulous program, Employment Earn, or Employment Related Daycare, which is a state helps parents who are working offset the cost of, there's childcare. There's a waitlist that's over a year long to get on that. So childcare is not affordable, but it is needed to be able to go to work. You know, I have a time situation where I have a kid who, like, what are we going to do this summer when you have to work full-time, but then you need childcare?
We have a summer employment program, or summer kids program for kids.
But that only, that's only going to work for a little, like, for, like, from nine till noon. And then you become the parent that drops your kid off at the pool. But that's only good for Condon.
Yeah.
But this childcare is, it's something we need. We need the after-school program that, that I believe that's their goal with the new facility is to be able to offer an after-school program because we rely. What if you, what if you're the single mom? He doesn't have grandma or grandpa or a friend. This, this is just something that can't go away.
Thank you. Thank you. And I agree with you completely. Thank you.
Yes.
Hey, is there anyone else? Okay.
I'm the only one freezing to death in here this morning.
Yeah, it's kind of cold. Yeah.
My teeth are starting to start chattering.
Okay. Let's just go ahead and start, start talking about it. I think if we started with the operational support grant application, would give these people some, some answers before we go into the Economic Enhancement Ordinance talking about childcare. So we have the application. There was a million dollars available in operational support, and we allocated $2 million in capital investment grants that hasn't opened up yet. Go ahead.
Do you, Tony, do you want to go or do you want me to go?
Um, go ahead.
Well, I, I want to just clarify too, what Judge Patton said that is, the last meeting, not that we're not, I'm not trying to not fund the Early Learning Center either. I guess in the budget thing, I'm kind of jumping back and forth here again a little bit, but we were talking about trying to do the endowment, a county-controlled endowment for childcare slash early learning center. And I was kind of surprised, I guess, that, I know we were going to work on that, but I was surprised that they came forward with a requesting funds because I thought we were going to try to work with this. And I want to go back to last fall when I told you folks, I said, I don't, I know you guys are concerned every time coming forward. And I guess my thing with this meeting, I'm hoping that we can kind of get some more communication going to go forward on what are your exact needs and stuff, you know? I guess I'm, I'm hearing one time that you had, I thought you said you had the staff to cover the expansion existing, but then in here, it says that you might be hiring more, and it looks like your staff is half of your cost. And.
To come up for the conversation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. Like I say, I'm just trying to gather information because I know what you guys bring in the center and how important it is. And I just want to come up. I mentioned to Carrie before we started that I had some questions. And I just, I guess I want to see a plan going forward. I mean, I know this is a struggle, but I don't want you guys to have to come every fall and go, oh, God, are we going to get funded or not? You know, I don't, nobody needs that. It causes more work for us and stress and you guys too. And that's not what we want to do. And you know, like I say, that enhancement thing, the endowment, I, it would be perfect, be nice if we could get there. I have concerns if we're going to be able to get there to do it with the funds that we have running out. But you know, childcare countywide, I agree. You know, this court has got to do it. And I'm concerned about the expansion. I think it was said 2.5 was the expansion originally, and then that's came up. Or is that?
No, that's about where it's, we had a really good bid. And that's why we got started because the highest bid was more towards the $3 million realm. And we wanted to go ahead and lock in on 2.5. It was a little lower than that, but there's some built-in, like incidentals that you are as put in there.
Yeah. Well, and my concern is, because I mean, do you have enough, you don't have enough to fund that right now? Do you, right? About the last time you told me.
Shell is funded. And I guess can we roll back a little bit? When you say plan, that brings up a lot of questions for me. That makes me feel a little defensive as well because Kelly nonprofit did state, we are operating on a lean budget. We're doing the best that we can with our budget. As far as staffing, we've lost a couple of people already, two pregnancies and one ended a job. Well, two, two other job opportunities and one left after having started child. And that's going to always happen.
I.
And so we still need to continue hiring.
No, okay. And I understand that. I just, it was mentioned in here, and then I took it the way it was worded that you're going to have to hire additional staffing. And I know the expansion is to make more slots available for more revenue.
Yes, so that, that will help us when we have those slots. There'll be room for growth for our community. Typically, the, the list is the infant toddler realm. So this will really, really need that because we'll go from having a shared classroom to one of each. At the preschool room, there will be room for two preschool rooms, but I don't see us having 40 preschoolers and maxing out anytime soon.
Yeah.
And then we'll have that third, like, I'm getting mixed messages. A lot of people are saying they want us to do more for them. They want that after-school care. They want that summer care. Well, we need support to do that, and the expansion will help us do that.
Sure.
Yeah.
Well, and I understand that. And like I say, I go back to, just like, I, and I know it's hard to project with how many you have in and your staff and everything. And I'm not trying to hold you to the, but I guess what I am personally, I'm looking for is what it's going to take for you folks down the road. I mean, you know, forecasting before it just comes to this. I'd like to try to be ahead of it a little bit. And like I say, I'm concerned about, you know, if we can get to the county-controlled fund where, you know, okay, yeah, we have a pool of money here that's going to be here and disperse it.
Well, the reality is there aren't enough funds coming to us federally or from state. And we are lucky to be in this county and to be supported. We are a fantastic role model to others of, like, if, if this continues to be supported. I would love to see things change at the state and federal level where more funding is coming in. Ratios do make it so that you have a certain amount of people, but even then, it's really not enough. Like picture being, having eight infants in a room and only two teachers. No one can leave for the bathroom. No one can be sick. Can't take a lunch break. It just doesn't work. You have to have a few extra people filling in. Also, they're responsible for doing laundry, sanitizing all the toys and cups. They have to step out of the classroom to do those responsibilities as well.
Cool. You know, the Kelly report talked about, you know, some additional revenue, you know, as opposed to not petting anybody. So that's off the table or staff, right? They talked about that in their report, but that, that's off limits. That's not going to be something that's going to be agreed upon, it sounds like. And so then we have to look at how are we going to raise more revenue? Or join some partnerships such as the City of Condon that's in their Condon Can Report, the Port of Arlington, that's economic development arm of the county. It's their way for us all to come together to help share the load. Because I worry about Gillen County's funding too. Things look bright, we have nothing signed for the future. And the SIP funds are sunsetting, the ones that we know right now. I just, it makes me nervous to promise the future. We don't know what the future is. So we actually have the same issue. You're worried about your funding, and so are we. So there's common ground. Yeah. Right? So how do we work together to find ways to create a partnership? I do think that the Moore County Boardman, they utilize the port and the city a lot of in businesses. That's the other thing. What about the businesses that utilize you, that your families are employed with those businesses? Or, you know, waste management? I don't know if you have any, however, they're already allocating 20% for this. So you see what I mean? Just trying to find ways around, around this.
There's been similar talk about housing, you know? I'm sure that, like, there's just been ideas floating around. And right now, they're all just ideas, right? Like, maybe we can get employers invested in some housing so that they always have a place where they can be. It would work similarly, just no one has figured that out. Yeah.
Well, I'd like to just get through, I've got about eight more questions here. And then, and like I say, I'll get these to you. I don't expect it, but you know, in the, in the financial health report, you state that, you know, the expansion is 2.5 more million. But you also say that you possibly might have to spend some of that from your savings? That page? Small portion of our savings would be used to help cover some of the cost. And I guess my concern going to that too is, I understand you're trying to get it done, but, so if you have capital grants, I don't want to see the operational support going towards that, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
I see. Well, I do, I have said this before, but I'll say it again. I do have faith that we'll have it fully funded by the time that it's completed. We're just in the process still with Ford and Roundhouse. I will say, you know, I don't know if they've been tuning in, but it's not a great look with insecurity with operations because they want to see that you have a plan to make sure that we're able to pay our staff. So it all works hand in hand. I have been, I've been saying that too, you know? They want to see that we're good and we're going to be able to stay in business.
Right. Well, and then another page, you talk about the compensation ranges. And, you know, I guess I'd like to get with you to see a breakdown. I want, I'd like to see more detail. And like I say, I don't, we're not going to get done here, but I myself would like to meet with you folks.
I would like to share it with you right now.
Okay, that's fine.
And just for clarification, are you asking other grant applicants for that information also? Or just?
I'm just, I'm concerned about this right now because of the money that the county has funded and going forward. I have real concerns if, I mean, I hope that we can continue to do everything that you need from us, but I'm concerned that possibly we might not be able to. And I'm worried about the future down the road.
Down the road?
I know. Yeah.
We're on the same page.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
I think if you look at it too, no one is being overpaid. And I want to remind you too, no one is getting benefits. Nobody's getting retirement pay. And we often lose teachers to the elementary system because of that reason.
Yeah.
She could speak to my job position was open for six years.
And I can appreciate that it's a challenge to find, you know, certified and keep certified people. I understand that. And like I say, I, hats off to you. I get that. And like I say, these questions I have, I'll get them to you also. But, and also in the, this, this form here, you say your savings is $397.025. Is that on like May or what was kind of the date?
That was in end of April.
Okay.
It did not remove any of our expected expenditures to the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th.
Right.
And we did report it differently last year, which was a hiccup that the grant committee did pick up when we discussed.
Okay, all right, okay. And then you stated here also that Head Start provides almost $200,026.7. And, and like I say, I know that's a concern because we don't know what the federal, where it's headed. And I know you guys are putting in for other grants. I don't, I don't know the totals on where you're at, but I know you're working on that. Where are we at here? Oh, and then another thing here, so trying to work on your funds discretionary cost. You talked about showing a payroll staff cut, which, a 15%, which I get, according to here, you know, you said you would save like $82,000, but then it could jeopardize. I just don't, I mean, is, I understand what you're saying, but is it going to be really viable to do that? To lose your staff?
No.
I know.
We all said it's pre, that's first will promise funding if we cut our staff pay rate.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're talking about the sustainability.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's really not an option, right?
Right. And Kelly nonprofit made statements as well stating, you know, they would need to really consider morale and all these other things if they chose to go this route. And that's very valid.
Right. And then you state here basically estimated for the next fiscal year is, for the staff is $550,000, so 49% of your overall expenses. So basically half, right? Staff is just half. Okay. All right.
Which I would say that's, because you consider a lot of budgets and there's staff parties probably closer to 80%.
What?
Up your budget.
Oh, 80%. Okay. I thought you were saying, okay.
And they're a service industry, so they don't have a business if they don't have a staff to.
Right.
House it.
Right.
How like they can put kids on a shelf and.
Right. So also here, they're talking about the endowment that we are working on. You're, you state here in endowment, just to cover the estimated $250,000 to $300,000 needed for the Condon Early Learning Center. So with the expansion, is that, or is that now? Or is that down the, I mean?
Is this in the sustainability plan?
Yeah.
What page are you on? What page are you on?
Thirty four. Sorry.
That has been the average of our asks.
I'm sorry, thirty one.
That has been the average of our asks. With the expansion project, there is hopefully gonna be some more revenue.
Okay.
And the the three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand is kind of the realm that we aim to keep it under.
For the support from us, okay. Alright, okay.
See, this is what's really good about this. This is what to me is broken about the grant program. We react to an application with no time, no input. It it just is not the right way to fund ongoing. Uh, uh, needs of the community. I it was designed for. Hot salaries. Really was. And so but we're using it for that. So I think we all agree that that. This is why we have an issue because. It's real difficult because we don't have a plan. We don't know your plan. Uh, this this answer right there was really great because that helped. Know what you're looking for in the future.
Yeah, we wanna work together.
Yeah.
And Grant earlier, you had asked, you know, like confused about why was the bit of an application if there's a line item that's been created. At the time that the applications were due.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we've we've been asking questions all along. Been annoying, but um, like, we were just wondering, like, do we have, do we submit an application this year to invite for the lineup? And the answers were all up in the air, which is okay, because it's a new program. So when the grant deadline came, that's why we submitted the grant so that we could at least.
Yeah.
Right, and and I understand that. And and like I say, my on. My misconception, I guess, on it was that and I I missed the last part of the budget meeting part of it because I had a doctor's appointment, but. But we were gonna try to just get this going to the childcare from. The Economic Enhancement Fund, Childcare slash Early Learning Center for the county. And. That's why I was confused. And and Leah asked the question, the budget about.
Here's the other complications. We can't talk unless we're here.
Yeah.
So we don't have, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the, this is, this is why this is happening right now is a good thing. So that we can all communicate um about what's going on. And yes, we were in a state of flux with. The grant application. We talked about the grant application. Um, and but on the other hand, we had. You know, we were trying to stay within the million dollars. And it's a countywide pot of money. That has been open wide and closed down. It was opened up a little bit this this time. So.
So, yeah, so it opened it up and it made more people fly and less to go around. But also I'll remind you guys that you almost took out the sustainability part of that grant process. And it was on the, yeah, it was on the thing.
Yeah.
So we're sitting here talking about sustainability and that was almost taken out of the grant.
Which was because we were, we considered no salaries, I think, maybe at that time.
I think the sustainability grant was meant to be a three to five year with SIPs. And since we're being close to the SIP. Sunsetting, we just divest sustainability out because.
Right.
Yeah, and like I say, you you clarified in that budget that they should be able to put in for the next, this year, one more year.
Yes, I do want to point that out, that we had asked the question in the budget committee meeting. If they would still be able to apply for the operating support. And it was decided that by the budget committee, yes.
Yeah, and I missed that part. So um, I guess last question I have too is. In your application, you submitted your balance sheet from July first of twenty twenty four. I was just curious, I mean, I know you're. We're going through the end of June, but I was curious if I would not a more current one, I guess, that was all like May or April.
I mean, just based off the verbiage in the application, uh, and I think that is. Sure.
Yeah.
That is, what was it, our coppers? I can tell you right now, it's over two million uh, that when the application was submitted. And I can get that to you as soon as you need.
Yeah, I just.
It all slices and dices, the savings still is the same.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to see where you're at at this point. And, you know, like I say, uh, the whole goal or I hope is that. You know, we can see what your needs are actually gonna be going forward. And so that we're not, you're not worried. We're not, you know. Just trying to work this out. So, so I I don't know. I'll I'll get these to you questions. I know you just got through. I'm at your stuff, but.
It's part of that, looking at the money that's in there that is sitting there to pay for the construction.
Oh, I'm sure.
In your.
I'm sure that that.
And everybody, they they do the balance sheet as of the day they do their. Their application, so.
Well, like I say, I guess I just want clarifications on, you know, where they're where they're. Cause like in that one page, you state that you're gonna use some of your savings possibly for. Expansion and and I I guess I just want clarification on where you're at right now. You know, so.
I don't understand the question. Like where we're at with the expansion?
No, 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 no. Your your bank account and everything, your current financial stuff.
Okay.
That's 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 all I'm asking for. Well, no, I mean, and and I'll get, you know, I just because, you know, I I. I'm concerned that the support grants. I just wanna make sure they're still being used for what they're being used for. You know, whether it's a capital.
Kelly nonprofit looked at our budget, we looked it through. We asked for advice as well, like, hey, is there anything that we can trim up? And there are a couple of things that we will, like there's um, the employee childcare benefit. Almost everybody is able to utilize Head Start right now. We're not dipping into that, but that's like four or five thousand dollars. One thousand five hundred dollars, we are gonna have some uh, you know, for the summer months.
So employees get a a spot at the childcare.
They get fifty percent off, oh, sorry, whatever hours they select. We have a few options.
Do we know how many slots that is?
We don't have a specific amount of slots that we hold for employees. It's just if their child is enrolled in our care. And they don't qualify for a Head Start for ERDC and they have to pay out of pocket, we give them a fifty percent discount.
If they look more than twenty hours, we.
Yes.
So how many employees have a s- a slot there? Can we ask that question?
No one is currently using that, but but right now we have. These four. You want to clarify, maybe they are using Head Start.
Yeah.
Yeah, there, no one's, no one is currently getting a discount in their care. That is an employee.
Start, sorry, that just led to another question. It was just about how many are Head Start. Um, or any, you know. Any question, any further question?
I I don't have anything. And like I say, I'll I'll get these to you guys and uh, like I say, I'd like to sit down and discuss more. Uh, it's more for me getting more information. And I just wanna clarify that uh. I wanna see that happen and, you know, go forward and um, childcare is important for the whole county and, you know, we've we've gotta. Gotta just try to figure out a way to go forward.
Commissioner Watkins, did you have anything?
Um, I I I thought their application was pretty dang thorough and I I don't know that. We're not asking other entities to give us updated balance sheets. Every month and I I just, I don't understand the angst.
I'm just looking for current information because of their lack. I'm concerned about the future funding.
That, yeah.
I know everybody is.
Yeah, and and that is the whole reason why we were went about creating this. Line item for an endowment because we were worried about it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just trying to find a little more detail and to help me with my information.
I mean, will the expansion cover? I don't think it will. I think you're still gonna need help. Do you think you're still gonna need help?
Yes, because the the families in this community cannot afford to pay for what our rates should be for childcare.
So that's great communication to to hear that. So we. There's, there's a movement to put the entire million away. The SIPs run out, but we will need to. You're asking us for, to find other money in our budget. Is that correct?
So my goal, my plan would be to go to hopefully have. An endowment in which the principal's not touched. And we all childcare in the county can vote from the interest or the proceeds. Give that some time to grow.
How long?
Well, Brooklyn said nineteen years. Other people have sent ten to eleven, so I'm not sure where the information is coming from.
Right here in Kelly's report.
I know it's a huge ask again, and I. I appreciate your your concern and question, but I um. I honestly, after doing all this, don't know that we can make any changes on our end. And I'm just gonna keep saying that.
No, I.
I don't know what else to do to.
I understand that. Yeah, and like I say, I. If if we can, if we can do that and get to that to where, you know, the the money's there all the time and we can still, you know, the interests are gonna thing. That's great, but I'm personally, I'm concerned that if we're gonna be able to get to that.
So this is what Kelly said about the endowment. With long-term sustainability as a goal. Larger investments by the county and other sources could ensure ongoing childcare um, in the region. However. This would likely require a significant time and resource investment to to secure an endowment large enough to cover childcare shortfalls for the whole county. Per the Gillum County Court Minutes, February nineteenth, um, approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year would be between eighteen and nineteen million dollars. At a million dollars a year, that's gonna take nineteen years without touching. That's my worry. Cause you're gonna be taking the interest that that earns and you're gonna be adding it back in there. So it's gonna be more than a million. And that is gonna double, double, double. So you're saying. It's closer to eleven or twelve years. It's what my, I calculate. I use that endowment tool and went through it and didn't ju- didn't disperse any money and have the interest go back to it. So you can't just say it's just gonna be a million every year for nineteen mo- years till it gets there. Because that interest is gonna compound.
Well, and I understand that too, but I I guess my concern, and I brought it up to Leah, in the meantime, when the SIP funds out. We've gotta still try to fund them.
So we have, and I I will point that out again, we have eleven million dollars that they have unappropriated sitting in the. Economic Enhancement Fund that every year has not been touched. And it's built. Okay, so now we're getting, now we're starting to get into. We could actually take it out of appropriations next year and fund it and be done. Okay, so this is what I think we should do if we could. They need to know that, they need an answer on the grant application. And I'm gonna. I'm gonna throw up. Well, I would love to. I I fully would like to fund it. Ten sixty six thousand dollars, done. Right. I I think we should fund, fully fund and take the difference from. The capital um, investment grant portion. But I think we should sit down and talk about conditions of awards. Some of the things we're talking, that might be the solution to some of your questions. Um, and then come up with some conditions of award, you know, potential fundraising efforts. Talking to some other entities about sharing and funding. Go ahead.
Uh, I can say like being a former parent, the fundraising, it's like everything else. You're stuck with the same parents. Doing everything and.
Yep, I've done it. And it's minimal. It's really minimal when you get down to it.
But I will also say that I'm very grateful that the childcare, even though, yes, they have increased the rates. Due to inflation, like it is nothing what other centers are asking. So.
Where does, have you checked with other counties about?
Actually, if you go to two one one dot org, you can Google childcare and you can, it will show you the rates for every county. Of what is.
But what counties help uh, the childcares? Do other counties in Oregon assist? And how, what's their structure, I guess?
This is, this is.
This is you guys. The only county in Oregon that does this.
And um, other people have posed their daycare. As far as rates go, um, on the ERDC website, it's very easy to access. You can see what ERDC will pay as a maximum per rate. Um, for, and it's based on our zip code for rural communities. Uh, infant toddler rates for a certified center at a hundred and thirty six to two hundred and fifteen hours monthly is one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And because of the Gillum County Operational Support Grant, we're able to lower our rates and we make sure our parents know that. In the way that our rates are structured.
Well, like I say, I just, I disagree with Mr. Watkins. I mean, like I say, I just want a little more detail.
I thought you said Mister Watkins.
And and like, and you know, like I say, I'm getting on here and. You know. The court has put a lot of money towards you folks and and I, you know, to date. And, uh, you know. Childcare is important for the countywide. We've got a facility that's struggling in Arlington that is using a thirty five year old building that was already used. And, you know, and like I say, there's, look, the horizon looks good, but it's not for sure. With some more stuff coming to the county and, you know, maybe that's gonna open up some more doors too. But uh. Like I say, I just.
Okay, so are we prepared? Do we wanna talk a little bit more? We can actually make a motion in the in the work session, so it'll be, it'll be decided, but I think just for their comfort, I. Believe. That this year, so because I will say too, this is a a year of limbo because of the. Um, the ordinance that has funding in it. Um, how we're gonna do that, I don't know. And I don't know if we're gonna get to talk about it a lot today. Because the work session ends at ten o'clock and that's fine, because we can talk about it at a next meeting or another meeting. Um, there's no pressure here. I just, let's take the pressure down. We all believe in childcare. We want to. Fund it, but we wanna make sure that all of the needs countywide get met, because there's a huge burden on Gillum County's shoulders to keep a lot of things rolling. And we just wanna make sure that we can do it all.
I hear you. And I'm just, I'm here as the director during my job. It's the community who needs this, you know. I can find another job. I just wanna make that clear too. This is not personal for me. I mean, it's coming because I love these kids. I love the families. But, you know, to keep coming here and I don't want, I don't want the angstiness. I have no interest in that. The things I can cut in my budget are like granola bars for the staff. Like I, I'm doing the best I can.
Understand that.
And the community wants a long-term solution and we need your help.
Okay. One of the things I'm hearing is a lot of families want a care to start earlier and go later. And I know there's. There's expense with that, but that seems to be something that a lot of people want. I I I can use an example of. A business that said that they lose their employee at four thirty, because their employee starts worrying about a dollar a minute after five o'clock. So they've locked to half an hour of that employee's work. So is there some way we can work together on that?
Well, if I know we're going to have the money to pay my staff and that's reliable, I can look at increasing hours.
Okay.
But I can't make a choice like that. I cannot increase my services without an increase in assistance. I mean, that just doesn't add up. If I'm gonna be open more hours, I have to pay for more hours. And one other.
Would there be a way to ask the city or the port to help us with that part? Um, if that's a a community need we're hearing, caring about?
If someone has an application I can fill out for for more money, give it to me. I will do it. Like we'll look, we can look into it, but. I don't know that that exists.
Just trying to find some partnerships to get, to fill the community need. And that's one of the things we're hearing um, about the community need. So, without taking all of it, that's just one little piece.
One, one aspect of the community need to to understand, because this is a problem that we face on a regular basis, is. And we offer these programs that cover the cost of preschool and infant toddler care, Head Start, Early Head Start, Preschool Promise, ERDC. Those programs come with, and those.
Those programs come with, and those enrollments that cover the care, come with program limitations that they will cover. And so there's a lot of times where a family says, my kid's in preschool, program ends at three thirty, I need care until five. Great, we're more than happy to provide that, but that does need to be paid for, because their program stops paying at three thirty. Or their program doesn't start paying until eight in the morning, but they need care at seven AM. So there does have to be a little bit of give back from the parents that, you know, we're happy to provide these extra hours of care. But you do have to pay for it, or we're gonna have to get more subsidies.
Absolutely. And I think our wraparound care is between one fifty and two twenty-four.
Hundred forty-five currently for part-time and two fifty-five for
And that's a month's worth of care, and sometimes people are finding that um too much to pay and they prefer to pick up at three thirty. So we are available, we're available till five, and we actually see that that's not utilized very often. Some people seem to think we're closed on Fridays, we're not, we are open on Friday, we see very little attendance.
Okay, so I said something that I may not have the facts on, so I wanna be sure, is it a dollar a minute after five o'clock?
Yes, because we close at five, so you're asking someone to stay after work. But if we
But you wouldn't adjust your hours somehow to figure out?
Someone came to me and said, I, first of all, no one has ever asked me about opening at five. Been working there a couple of years, no one's ever asked me to adjust my hours, and came to me with like a real need for that. I haven't had one person ask me that. If they did, I might be able to talk to a teacher or two and see, are you willing to come in a little later in the day and stay later, but we haven't.
Would you, would you consider any of the feedback we received in the survey once we gather those results? If that tells us that in the survey?
I would also ask that if a parent needs my care or our care after five, that they talk to me about it, as I have, then I could formulate a real plan, but if it's, you know, someone in Arlington or Condon that's heard we don't offer that care and they're just irritated about it, but don't actually have a child that needs it, like I don't really know
Pilot it, see how it worked for three months or something like that.
Again, I'm raising my hours I'm paying for staff, but I don't really know.
Okay, all right, so let's get back to the grant application.
So I, I guess, like I say, we just, we're, it's on the agenda today and we just need to decide what we're gonna do.
Okay, I'm in support of fully funding with conditions that we're kinda getting in the weeds and talking about, that we can come up with some some things to um come to a compromise, I guess, on some things where where wanna make sure is covered in the community, if there's a way, and um utilize some of the feedback we receive.
I've said many times on camera, I would like to bring back after-school care and summer care. I wanna make sure I can fund that.
Okay, so conditions to move forward, those types of ideas, is what I'm thinking of as far as conditions.
But if you're funding us fully at three sixty-six and wanting us to add additional care, understand that that is gonna put us over budget.
Well, you're not gonna be able to do summer care or after-school care until your expansion happens, so it wouldn't be in this cycle, it would just be, let's start working on that
Absolutely.
Uh idea together, okay? Okay, so that's, that's what I'm, that's, that's where I'm going with um some conditions of things that we can work together on. So, okay, all right, so that covers, that covers that. I don't, all right, it is ten o'clock, calling the regular meeting to order of the Gillum County Court. We've established a quorum, are there any additions or revisions to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I would like to add a discussion of the equitable grant distribution
Okay.
That got brought up by Lynn Ball in the
Okay, do you wanna put that under just like new business discussion?
Or this, actually, I'd like to put it in front of the childcare.
Okay, um. There, okay, and then distribution, oh, I just wanna write this down, distribution, uh huh, go ahead.
And then um did um Anya talk to you about moving John Anderson up?
Yep, he's gonna get moved up. So we're gonna move you um John Anderson Wheatland Insurance, we're gonna move you up um to uh I think it'll work to put him before Net Green. And then he would just be able to, to be done after public comment, okay, so you'll go um right after public comment. So then you can be clean, so, all right. We do have public comment and correspondence at this time, individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time and at other times throughout the meeting. Um speakers are asked to raise their hand, be recognized by the chair and give their name and city, and limit their comments to three minutes. Rob, go ahead and come up.
Morning.
Morning.
I'm Rob Tury, Executive Director of Pioneer Community Development. And on behalf of uh Pioneer and our board, I'm here to uh discuss the Gillum County accountable housing program. Which was a uh result of like over a year's worth of meetings facilitated by Oregon Solutions and attended by a wide variety of Gillum County stakeholders and members of the court, county court at that time, which was in twenty seventeen. The idea of that particular process was to find ways to incentivize builders and investors to, you know, invest more money in Condon and Arlington from the standpoint, especially rentals. So, excuse me, and they, after the facilitation was over, we came up with several ideas to uh do this and Pioneer Community Development was put in charge of administering the program um for the county. And it has been, in my mind, extremely successful to this point, even through COVID and the high interest rates and things that um evolved from that. The original MOU with the county um gave us seven years um for the program's um continuation, and it expires on July first of twenty twenty-five. Um we are here to ask that we um extend the program. We will, we're not expecting or requesting any additional funds and don't anticipate um asking very additional funds, cause the bulk of our funds go out for construction lending and then they come back to us and just continue to revolve through. Just rather than going through all the programs and things, I just wanted to make some examples of what the grants and loans that we came up with, what they can accomplish, and it's pretty, it's pretty cool, really, when you look at it. Uh for example, we have a demolition grant, which provides up to ten thousand dollars for somebody to demolish a derelict structure, um which takes, which opens up a brand-new lot for development. Um we have somebody then comes in and says, I wanna build uh a new home on that, on that property. Then they can also access our construction loan, um which is extremely attractive, three percent uh interest-only loan with no commitment fees, um to really try to incentivize these folks. And then we also have utility extension grants, which provide up to ten grand for them to bring utilities to the, the new construction property. Um then we have a new rental housing development grant, which provides up to twenty thousand dollars per new u- new rental unit um with the requirement that the person receiving a grant has to sign a five-year agreement that says they will continue to offer that property as a uh a minimum month-to-month rental unit during that time. If at any time they sell the property um before that five years is up, then they have the pro, they, on a pro-rata basis, pay us back um the portion of those twenty thousand dollars that goes back in, you know, to our grant fund again. So we take a, a derelict structure and, and a crappy-looking lot and turn it into a brand-new um three-bedroom, two-bath rental property, and then, of course, the other app, the other benefit for the county is property tax revenue. Uh if you take a look at just one unit that, that we built in Arlington, three-bedroom, two-bath um was on the books for two hundred and forty-five dollars assessed value and is now on the books for fifteen hundred dollars. So those, in the five years that we, since we built that, um it's added an additional seven thousand dollars worth of property taxes. And that's just one, one property.
Right.
Um so as we do this, there's, you know, several benefits that continue, you know, to develop. Looking at one other um example, which I think is, is pretty, um, get your attention. We also have provided construction loans for two four-unit rental properties here in Condon. They're taking advantage of not only our construction loans, utility extensions, but they're also going to get twenty thousand dollars per unit uh for that five-year period. So between the two, excuse me, between those two units, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars with the grants. So what does the county get for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars? We get eight new rental units um basically for twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars per. Um that's a pretty darn good return on investment, in my opinion, not even counting the increased property taxes that come along. So we feel like the grant, the program has been very successful, I provided you folks last week with a listing of, of all the things that we've done, the total reconciliation of, of what we've done. And uh we're here to ask that, that the county consider extending this program for another five to seven years at this time.
Right. Okay, since this is just public comment, um I appreciate your input, um I'm on board, I'm sure well, let's, let's go ahead and it, what we need to do is just take it up at the next meeting officially. But do all the paperwork and get it in order, it's just, we just learned that um we need to do this. So um, yeah, is there anything else you wanted to ask him?
You said expires June or July this year?
July first.
July first.
First, yeah. I don't think there's any reason why we wouldn't do this, so.
Okay, if there are any, any questions that come up here in the meantime, feel free to
It's a very important program for our community, so thank you for your part.
All right.
Thank you.
For the time.
So we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting. Okay, thank you. All right, um any other public comment? No other public comment, anything online? Okay, um we will go into um John Anderson, come on up, Air Insurance, Wheatland.
Morning Judge. John Anderson Wheatland Insurance. So I think in your packet, I provided a couple of things, the first one being the CIS renewal proposal for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. The CIS or the
The safe stuff.
Oh, okay. So seven-one CIS renewals, um I've worked with staff, Brooklyn and Anya, who have been great. Uh and giving me the things that I need and timely, um so culmination of that is the proposal, a couple of highlights that I just wanted to give you and what's happened with this last year. Um buildings over a hundred thousand were independently appraised by a CIS consultant, we've got that information, you guys have that on file. So anything over a hundred thousand is in good shape as far as valuation of the builders. Gillum County as a total, uh insurance value for property, we're at seventeen point six million. Pretty decent news for this year, um the rate increase for CIS was three point four. If you look back at the last five years, I haven't come in here with better news than ten percent, the last few years have been in the high teens to shoot things, so starting to show that, at least within the CIS insurance pool, things are starting to look better. Yeah, so. Claims-wise for CIS, nothing out of the ordinary, handful of uh I would say minor auto claims spreading across to a couple of different departments, so uh all in all, that looks really good. Um next steps would be if you approve this, we'll get a signed copy, turn it into CIS, at that point, they will issue the renewal and the invoice, at which point Wheatland can then do the uh Excel breakdown by department premium and get that over to Brooklyn.
Okay. All right.
Outside of that, there's also the safe, you guys don't have it, but I can email to you afterwards, we just got your safe renewal, so it's a little late to into you guys today, but we just got that and a couple of highlights with that, this year they did do a physical audit with Brooklyn, and so a few things changed as far as the way that safe codes things versus what the employee is doing, and we had a couple of employees in the county whose jobs descriptions and maybe has changed a little bit as far as the way it's rated with safe. Um that being updated, um the big thing that's changed, there is some premium there. Um but that is due to your claims history, and so within safe, there's what's called an X mod. Uh last year was point nine five, this year is one point four, even a point change in that X mod is significant. So looking back through our last five years, that's the window that they look at, and it rotates as we go into a new year, the last year drops off, and so that's your average for your X mod.
Okay.
We've got about uh two hundred and twenty-five thousand of claims rolling with safe, some of those are open. Um and are gonna continue to pay out, cause I believe they were disabling situations. So, uh if you have questions on that, let me know, I can walk you through that.
Right.
When you get over one on your X mod, it's not the greatest thing from a safe standpoint. Uh they like to see you under eight or one, so we had a discount on there with the Oregon Route Plan. That discount is not available to entities that are performing above one, so that dropped off as well. And then the last thing that we are
I will have questions about that later, I'll see you about it.
Sure, and I can get you a lot more information, I don't like to talk about the hip hop stuff comes into play, so um the last thing is pollution, we were looking into that. We haven't had enough time to prepare that for you, so I'll probably come to the next court meeting.
All right. Okay, all right. Any, any questions, Mr. Anderson?
How, how long, you said we're over that one point nine, I mean, if going forward, no claims, I mean, is it, how long?
Yeah, so it depends on a five-year basis, so we have, so far, we've had a pretty good uh run this year. Uh but in the past two years, i- in that uh five-year spread, there were some very large claims.
Okay.
Uh and those claims um are still paying out, and so it's on a five-year basis, so it might not be the year that you were talking about, but those disabling claims continue to pay out. So if we have a good year this, this year, those big claims are right in the middle of the five-year spread, they're like years two and three. So that fifth year or whatever, uh on my spreadsheet, the claims were only like two thousand dollars that year, so that's really not what's hurting us.
Right.
We have to trend forward in a positive direction, and that X mod does go down, so as we trend down premium goes down.
Yes, okay, so action we will need to take is uh approval of the CIS proposal, if we're in agreement of that. So we need a motion.
Good questions. You good? I will make a motion to uh approve CIS's proposal as presented.
I'll second it. Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the proposal of CIS um as presented, is there any discussion?
We would recommend doing the safe as well.
You wanna do the safe as well?
Yeah, or you can wait until the next meeting if you want to, um we can get you that in the meantime.
Okay, our next meeting will be the twen- Just wanna make sure, let's make sure we have our questions, if that's gonna work for our
Yeah, you have, you have to turn in the notice of election for safe prior to seven-one.
Okay. I remember last year.
Yeah, then they've changed the way that they've billed this, because fiscal year for public needs is seven-one, so as long as they have the notice of election saying, yes, we agree to take this policy by seven-one. Then you're, they'll issue the policy and then they'll bill you behind the fix, into next fiscal year, so your payments are actually not due until like the third week of uh July.
Okay.
In the safe one, we like, we, that's the one I projected all, you've seen, like you probably, we project all the rules.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they Mm-hmm, yeah, I just wanted to make sure they had time to. To ask any questions if they wanted to, if we're comfortable doing it now, that's fine too. But June eighteenth is the next meeting. Let's just go ahead and take care of the motion on the first one, and then if we need to make another motion, we can on safe, okay?
Good.
So uh I have a motion and a second on approval of the CIS proposal, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay, so that takes care of that, and now on the safe, did you want to take action on that, or did you want to wait?
Did you have any questions or not, but you needed to?
We have to have it.
Well, it looks like it's out there, yeah, okay.
I just saw it, so.
Yeah, it's.
Do you have it? You don't, that's a hard time.
Yeah, I don't have. That's what you're talking about, the experience reading down there, John.
So your prior year was point uh. Nine-five last year, so it's up to one point one-four. So quite removed.
I don't see any problem with that.
Okay.
I'll take a look at that, I haven't seen it, if you, did you want to look at it?
Me?
Yeah.
I looked at it real quick.
Okay. Okay. Do we want to take action? You have a motion, questions?
Um I'm going to approve the.
But that was this total premium, right, seventy-five? I don't know.
As presented.
Yeah.
As presented.
I'll second the one.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded to approve the safe. Proposal as presented, um is there any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, now you can proceed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. You owe me, John. Okay, uh. We have the update on the bead funding process from Netflix screen. Is he on? Okay. Nick, you can go ahead.
All right, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, um I'm gonna send a request to share my screen, because we do have a PowerPoint I want to pull up. Um which basically just mirrors the memo I sent to the court. I'd like to say that we're here with glad tidings, we're just here with tidings, uh there's a lot happening in the policy environment, so I wanted to give the court an update. And also ask for your feedback about how you'd like us to proceed. Um so for context, as I'm loading this presentation, we started working on the BTAP. Uh application funding, which was broadband technical assistance program about eighteen months ago. And that grant was awarded to Gillum County. And through those funds, we were able to do a high-level network design, updated opinion of probable construction cost. As well as a lot of the permitting and fieldwork that we needed uh to prepare for our bead application. So things were going really well until about a month ago. Um we anticipated changes to various programs through the federal government under the new administration, that wasn't surprising. Unfortunately, bead uh was already extraordinarily complex. And uh it took the state, uh all the states, it wasn't unique to Oregon, but all of the state broadband offices. Several years to negotiate um with NTIA, the federal agency overseeing this program. To get to the point where they could actually make awards to sub-grantees. So just as a reminder, uh NTIA is the federal agency uh received the congressional appropriation. They made us a grant to each state, Oregon's was about six hundred and seventy million dollars. And then the state passes those funds through to sub-grantees. So our application goes to the state in order to access those federal funds. And uh through the BTAP process, as well as the other preparation that you've done over the last several years. We were able to get Gillum County pre-qualified to be a sub-grantee. So we've gone through all that process, we uh the state had opened the sub-grantee application phase. And we began preparing our applications, and about three weeks into that process, we received a notice to stop work. So that notice came down from the Oregon Broadband Office in response to a notice from NTIA. Indicating that they were going to change uh policies related to bead. And uh at this point, everything I say from here on out is is speculation. So I'm hopeful that uh we're being overly pessimistic, but I think uh we're probably pretty close to. What's gonna come down, so within the next ninety days, we accept, we expect to see a new policy directive. That will most likely include a not-to-exceed cost per pass. In other words, a cap on the amount of funding that they'll allow to be spent uh on fiber optic service. And then uh there's gonna, it's gonna be interesting to see how the language actually reads, whether they allow. Uh low Earth orbit satellite providers to compete or require states to let lower. Uh orbit satellite providers to compete. Right now, under the current rules, uh the satellite option is the option of last resort. Uh fiber is prioritized in the award criteria. So if we do see these two changes, it will significantly affect rural uh counties. And so the the knock-on effect for Gillum. Is that we likely will see areas that have to drop out, because they don't uh they land us above that cost. Per pass. So we'll likely have to modify the scope of our proposal. And it's going to result in increased competition, where you may be competing head-to-head with SpaceX. Um for service to Gillum County. So those would be fairly significant changes compared to what we're seeing today. Um that will put some of your areas at risk, and specifically, we were batting cleanup on the South County. Areas of South County that were eligible under bead are those that were not within the. Uh pri- prior award, you know, prior federal award areas. And those are fair fairly dispersed, so we'll show you the cost per pass on those. Uh but that's gonna make that South County area much less competitive, uh if these are in fact the changes we see. And it's also gonna make us probably need to sharpen the pencil a bit on the North County. Uh which there are provisions for in the design, so within the bead rules as they currently stand. The Oregon Broadband Office provided two alternative scenarios in addition to one hundred percent coverage. So all sub-grantees have to apply for a hundred percent coverage, that provides the baseline. Uh for if you were to provide fiber optic service to every broadband serviceable location. And then they gave us two alternative scenarios with a reduced coverage ratio. That we could also apply for, so we can go down to those alt-one and alt-two scenarios. Um for some counties, they also provided a match waiver out of the gate. Gillum County did not receive that, so we can still request a waiver on the match. Um but there's no guarantee that we would receive it. So for now, what we're doing is essentially looking at your hundred percent coverage scenario and your alt-one scenarios. And that's what I'm showing on the next slide for Arlington School District. There are four hundred and twenty-five eligible locations for service under the hundred percent scenario. And then alt-one and alt-two are almost identical, it drops you down to seventy-two percent or seventy-one percent. Uh which would mean you could go down from four hundred and twenty-five to at least three hundred and six. Under alt-one or three hundred and two locations under alt-two. As you can see from LS Networks uh costing. Your hundred percent coverage under that school district uh uh grant area is just over eighteen million. Almost nineteen million. And with the twenty-five percent match requirement, that would put a four-point-seven million dollar price tag on Gillum County to do a hundred percent. That's a big lift. Um that can't be spread out over a four-year construction period. But absent a waiver from NTIA, that's what you would be looking at. Uh there's much better news under alt-one, which we'll show you on the next slide. Uh but that results in a cost per pass of about a hundred and four, just over a hundred and forty thousand dollars, I'm sorry, forty-four thousand dollars um for your hundred percent scenario. Unfortunately, the news in Condon is much worse, because the residual eligible locations are so spread out. Um so under your hundred percent scenario, we have forty-four potential locations that could have been connected. And that would result in a cost per pass of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um and a total cost of six point seven million. We don't know what that potential cap is going to be. Um but the broadband office indicated that it might be something closer to twenty thousand dollars. Or even less, and so we would be four to five times higher than that uh minimum. Under that hundred percent scenario, and I am showing I own um. I would, I would say that the majority of I own um would just not even be feasible um under these. Potential changes, uh there are some areas that are close to the main urban center that we could probably connect. Under that alt-two. Um which goes down to seven percent coverage, I just mentioned that because a portion of that does sneak into Gillum County. Um but I've got Kyle Browning here, and so he's gonna present. Um what the hundred percent scenario looks like, as well as the alternative percentage, so that you can kind of see. Uh what this would change in terms of network coverage. And I added to this slide under alt-one, what that reduces the build cost to and the match to. Um again, based on the high-level design cost estimate, so. Kyle, if you're on and you want to just speak to this.
Hello, I'm here, it it switched me to a panelist, so I had to reload real quick. Morning, everyone, so to kind of give you an idea of the design, what went into these um. Designs and what you're looking at, so on the left-hand side is the map for the one hundred percent coverage. Full end-to-end fiber connectivity. So all the yellow dots on the maps are the eligible locations, uh red lines are air proposed aerial fiber. Uh. Blue lines are proposed buried fiber, and then the cyan is the district grant area boundaries. Um so what we did for the alternative one to try and reduce that cost, overall cost and cost per passing was we removed. Um. A significant, pretty much all of the underground build, as that is going to be the the most expensive part of the construction. Are the under, is the underground construction um. We pi- um and then. The branches that kind of go east and west out of Arlington, we removed those just because of. The the amount of footage per passing, um there's just not enough density, and. The goal was to remove as much of the average cost per passing as possible to be more competitive. So we opted to keep. The. The idea is to extend the network from Arlington. Down to a new hub in Rock Creek, um using the existing fiber, and then build new fiber in the southern part of the. The um. The district grant area, and that would enable future fiber extensions off of that to feed the rest of the southern. Um. Part of the grant area, um. And realistically, it would also pick up a lot of what's left in Condon as well, um because a lot of those addresses are near the southern. Order of the grant area. So that's kind of a high level of what we, what of the decision we made um to remove for the. Arlington School District between the full one hundred percent and the alternative.
And then just to point out for the court, that does significantly reduce the total build cost. Um at nineteen thousand per pass, you're at about five point eight million. And then your twenty-five percent match is one point four million, so a a much more achievable number. And we're still hitting three hundred and six customers in this all-one scenario. So fairly competitive, uh even though we're we're aiming at a target, we're not entirely sure what it. What it's gonna be, uh until we see that new policy directive. And then I'll go down.
Nick, I will add that a lot of, so the three hundred and six, a lot of those addresses within Arlington, um a majority of those three hundred and six are within Arlington. And are already served technically by Arlington TV. Um.
Just not at the, not at the level that uh would preclude them from getting upgraded under under bead.
Right. And on this. Oh, go ahead. Sorry, I I can take it if you want, um so. I didn't do an alternative for Condon. Primarily because the alternatives, it wasn't going to really move the needle very much from the total build cost, there's just not enough addresses. And there's um not much density, um. So this was the the full one hundred percent coverage, um the couple. Um in that southern half would be extending off of what Rally Networks um is doing under the um EA Cam. Um. Yeah, I'll let you go, Nick, that was kind of all I had for this one.
Yeah, so just pointing out, um we, under the Condon proposal. Uh we would still be getting fiber down to the northern edge of this Condon School District, and so at our expense. Um at some point in the future, we could extend that fiber further south to pick up those. Uh it's just um given the amount of effort to submit a bead application. And the fact that we have to apply by district's grant area. Um we, we can't include, we cannot include these in the Arlington application. And the Condon application on its, on its own as a standalone, we do not think is gonna be cost competitive. And really don't think it would be a good use of the county's resources to. To even consider that unless. Our assumptions about what's coming prove incorrect. So we, we are trying to position ourselves to be competitive while we wait. For additional uh information from the federal government and the Oregon Broadband Office. There is a lot of uncertainty, uh given policy changes that are afoot right now. And um unfortunately, what we're hearing from the people in the know is that it will likely make it harder, not easier for us to compete. That said, I do think under alt-one, the north half of the county is still competitive. So at this point, our recommendation is that we essentially hold tight. Uh not continue with additional design until we get that further guidance. And then we'd like to come back to the court and just revisit this set of assumptions that we presented today. Uh we're not asking for a decision today, we just wanted to make sure you were aware of what's happening and what we've done to try to pivot in anticipation of. This uh potential change in direction. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it back to you, Judge, if you have any question or comments.
Thank you for keeping us updated on this. Change, um how long do we think it will be before we'll know more from the federal government?
It's a great question, I, I think we'll know within the next two months what the NTIA policy directive is. And then we'll likely see a period of time, maybe two or three months, for the state broadband offices to adjust. And update uh whatever policies that they need to adjust. And then they would reopen for the sub-grantees the opportunity to apply for funding. So I would expect four to six months before we're able to submit an application. And then if. These assumptions are fairly accurate, I think you have a competitive application for the north half of the county that would still deliver a lot of value. At a match that is, I think, quite reasonable, um especially since you can spread that out over several years. You may even be able to self-fund, uh but there are lenders who would provide financing for this type of infrastructure as well. So I think you'll have some options. Um for the north half of the county, I, I don't want to come across as overly pessimistic on the south half of the county. It was gonna be tough under the current rules, I think it's gonna get harder under the new ones.
All right. Thank you. Do either of you have questions of him?
Uh, I'd just like to have you send that to me, Nick. Your, your.
Um, we've got.
Oh, you got it? Okay, never mind.
We did update a couple of maps, so I'll resend this when we get off the call here.
Great, we'll get it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Well, full study. Thank you very much. It's been a, a long road on fiber trying to get, get this going. Um. Yeah, so thank you very much. And then you'll come back with, with more information when we have it. Keep us updated. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks so much.
I've sometimes thought about a cost share. On fiber to just see if there's ways we can get some people hooked up. Um, with assistance from the county, if, if we share the cost with the, the people interested in doing it. Um. At one point at my home, um, I do have fiber going right by my house. I was told it'd be two thousand dollars if we got the trencher. Um, it's like within feet of my house. It's very expensive and of course it'd be buried, but. Um, as we wait, the cost goes up. So. Okay, um, all right. Next, on the agenda is the consent. Agenda, that's where we're at, correct? Yeah. Consent agenda. We do not have minutes yet. They're on my desk. I haven't had a chance to review them yet, so they will be um. Considered at the next meeting, the May twenty-first minutes. Um, so all we have is consider bills pending review.
So I just have a comment about them. I noticed that they just say. All the bills above five hundred are included in this.
I have statute requirement.
Mm-hmm. To, yeah, to show those to people, right?
Uh, to give to you guys, because they're a group from the top. I'd like for you guys to approve them and for them to be posted.
Cause we used to like get the edit and then.
Yeah, that's what I look at.
I mean, I, I just did what the statute said.
Mm-hmm.
Was that, is that a, a. Feature of Casell to be able to filter?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. What do you prefer?
Um, I just was questioning why.
Yeah, just the statute itself. Yeah, okay. Um, so do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda minus the regular meeting minutes for May. Twenty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Mm-hmm.
I'll second the motions.
Uh, it has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Um, not including the regular meeting minutes of May twenty-first. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, unfinished business. Consider childcare survey results. Um, we have just gotten um. The, there were two weeks' results. We haven't even had time to look at those yet. Um, I think we should give it another couple of weeks and revisit this unless you wanted to talk about any, anything. I think. Um, they were sent to both of you.
I just, yeah, I was, didn't get through them all the way, but.
Looked like a lot of.
Yeah.
Um, Condon, very little Arlington.
Yeah.
So far. So I think if we just wait a little bit and then talk a little bit more about that, that would be good.
How many, how many kids do they have in the Arlington childcare currently?
Um, I, that, I don't know at the moment.
Oh, you got your printout, printout.
We can reach out to Ashley and ask right now. I did talk to um a board member at the, the North Fire had a. An event. Um, and he was there and I asked him how things were going and he said they're going and um they're still functioning.
I'm, I was surprised they didn't come to us for any um. Fun.
Yeah, they didn't ask for any grant money this year. And they were well aware of the availability, correct, Brooklyn?
Yes.
Yes, there's.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. Anything else on the childcare survey? I do just want to say about the word childcare. I understand that in a certified childcare. Um, there has to be an education component, component, and I just want to make sure that. People understand, I know that and that you know that. Childcare is a global issue. It could be a grandparent taking care of a child. It could be a spouse taking care of a child. Um, it, it, there's all kinds of pieces to the puzzle to make it all work for a community. So that's the data we're trying to gather. What do we currently have? What children are coming up and what are the needs of the future? Um, and if, if this is a useful survey, in the future, we can use it and collect data year after year after year. So that it can help you, it can help Arlington, it can help in-home providers know what their future may hold for children coming up. So I think it can be useful. Um. And so I just wanted to, to say that about um certified childcare. Consider approval of fiscal year twenty-six operational support grant application for Condon Early Learning Setup. We had a work session at nine o'clock. It was a, a good discussion. Um. Is there anything more you wanted to discuss about the application or um where we go from here?
It's just deciding an amount.
Deciding an amount, and then are we going to ask for. Uh, a chance to sit down and set some agreed-upon um. Conditions moving forward of. Talking about.
Did you have something that you wanted before that?
Yeah, I do.
Oh, sorry, man. What do you, I, yeah.
Um, I wanted to have the discussion about the grant.
I apologize that you did want to have that before this. So let's back up. Go ahead, Commissioner Watkins.
So since Lynn's letter came out on May seventeenth, I've been working on. I'll give you that. Okay. Because I, I had a few people in the community come up to me and ask me after the fact. About his letter regarding um grant distribution.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna read this.
Yeah.
Since Lynn Ball submitted his letter to the editor and to the Gillum County Court on May seventeen, twenty twenty-five. I have been conducting research. I use the past five years as evaluation of taxes and grant distributions. I didn't use this here, obviously, because it's not complete. The spreadsheet I handed out does not reflect the difference that the districts have been shorted. Due to the appeal to the Department of Revenue for taxes for Portland General Electric or Avengrid. Those figures are not available on the county website. I did not include the general fund for Gillum County, the Port of Arlington, or the E S D, as they are county-wide entities. I also left out the Iown School District for obvious reasons. I would also like to note that the grants are awarded grants amounts and not necessarily what was paid out. As some grants had stipulations attached to them when awarded. The population of Gillum County may be less than or more, depending on what census you look at. Pluxy weighting as people move in and out. The voter base in Gillum County is fourteen hundred and forty-four. Fifty-five percent of the voters are in the South County and forty-four percent in the North County. Mr. Ball's letter only painted a picture of the grants. He has picked out the Condon Early Learning Childcare Center as his target. Furthermore, he penned another letter to the county court on May thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Regarding the C E L C funding. The previous court was concerned about early learning childcare. And I presented this during the September of twenty twenty-four meeting. Why is early childhood care and education important? The period of birth to eight years old is one of the remarkable brain developments for ch- children. And represents a crucial window of opportunity for education. When children are healthy, safe, and learning well in their early years, they are better able to reach their full developmental. Potential as adults and participate effectively in economic, social, and civil life. There are endless studies regarding the benefits of early childhood care and education. For our county to maintain a healthy workforce and to make it attractive to new residents, we need to have those services available. More importantly, is the welfare of our youngest residents. And that are the future of our county and our country. I believe it's obvious without the support from the county. The centers in this county would not be able to provide affordable services. Currently SIP funds are supporting, supporting these programs, but there will be eventually be a sunset. On these funds. The court has identified this as a priority reflected on this strategic plan of October twenty twenty twenty-three. The court voted to dedicate twenty percent of the economic enhancement host fees from waste management. Towards creating an endowment fund. It will take some time to build a fund substantially enough to support the programs. With interest earned from the endowment, but I'm afraid of what happens if we don't plan for the future when the SIPs are no longer. Available or tax incentives programs change. The former judge Liz Farrar Campbell had been in talks with Larry Johnson, superintendent of the Arlington School District. Where the current prehe- preschool is housed. Those talks include possibility of building a couple classrooms onto the existing school. In which the early learning and daycare could exist. If in the future, a new building for the Arlington childcare could be built, then the Arlington School District. Would have a couple extra classrooms to use. We cannot penalize the Condon Early Learning Center for this. We need both ends of the county to have an opportunity for safe. And affordable childcare and to support the workforce needed currently and in the future. People moving into the communities look at housing, school, childcare, and medical needs. Please stop allowing certain individuals to divide the county north versus south. Thank you.
Okay. So I think um. I, I have.
Without the numbers that are, you know, that's, it's not exact because of the way I pointed out that the districts are not getting.
Right.
Exactly what that.
Yeah.
But.
Okay.
I personally think that we have been, actually, I think the court has been pretty fair. Of, you know, helping to balance one in and the other, so.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we have the operational support grant application for the Condon Early Learning Center. Let me back up. Was there any more discussion on your? Your information?
I, I have the um spreadsheets that back all that this up. But if anybody's interested, I will send it to the court.
Yeah. Okay. So the applications um before us, um, we had a work session at nine o'clock. Is there any discussion before we consider their application?
I think it's just agreeing on the amount and.
Mm-hmm.
Or. Looks like it possibly, I don't know what we do, could have seen the million dollars, so.
Right, I'm in support of um. Funding it so that we can work out how we're gonna move forward for one. Um. With some solutions, but want to make sure that we can sit down at a table and talk and make that a condition of, of award that we can talk. About how are we going to do things such as um implement an after-school program and when might that start? Um. And the amount is three hundred and sixty-six. So where we could get that money is through, is from the um. Capital investments portion of the, of the SIP funds. We have, we had a million in operational support. And we have two million in capital projects, so it's all in one line item. Am I saying that correctly, Brooke?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not like we're gonna be over budget or anything, but if that's a decision. That we choose to make or want to talk about it further. Um.
Well.
And then we can talk, we can have a dialogue in a way that we can talk to you about. What will your needs be in the future? And then Gillum County will be able to say to you. Um, this is what we can. Find i- in our budget to help you, so that we can have a dialogue. I think what we learned in the work session, and I had thought about this before, it's really hard to, for us to plan. The, in the structure of these competitive grants. I, I think there has to be another way. Because we're just reacting to an application that we don't even, weren't even sure what's, what's coming. Um. And I have tried to be careful about not reaching out to individual people. And talking about those things because I don't want to show any preference to anyone. Um. By doing so, so. Um, I think in the beginning with the competitive grants, the operational support, the, it was a. A vision that has evolved and changed over the last fifteen years. Fifteen years ago, there were very few nonprofits. And it was mostly, I think, just mostly taxing districts, I think, that needed a little bit of help. I wasn't here to do that part of the work then, but I was kind of on the fringes of things. So over time, we've had more nonprofits come along and um more funding. Now the funding's dropping off, we have to just figure out how we're gonna do this. Um, and a reliance on salaries for the operational support has happened.
Well, and I, I think that the court needs to keep in mind as we go forward. With negotiations on businesses that might be coming in, that we. Push them to help, force them to, to support those.
There's two things I want to mention because you brought that up. We are going to be having a meeting July eighth. It's gonna be a roundtable meeting so that we can start talking about what we're going to ask for. When a potential big business comes along, so that we have at least a large number, so we're making sure we don't miss anything to start those talks. Um.
Well, and for uh more population, you need the housing.
Yeah.
You need the medical and you need the childcare and you need your schools to be good and healthy.
Right. So we just need to make sure we do that. The other thing is I had a, and I think that the Early Learning Center had left. Before, before I got to mention this to you, at the end of the last county court meeting. Um, I want to disclaim this. This is not a promise. This is a try. I'm trying. Um, Avengrid um received a agreement. Well, it was a, a agreement that was negotiated and it's called a payment of lieu of tax on um Oregon Trail Solar. Correct, isn't that the correct project? Oregon Trail Solar. And in the agreement, it states. That it was for a solar project and an op- potential optional battery storage. Avengrid and I have been talking about the optional battery storage, and I proposed to them. I just want you to know, and I guess I want the community to know, that I am trying. Um. That I proposed to them. What we could do is fifty thousand dollars to each. Early Learning Center, Arlington's and Condon's. Um, the agreement's a fifteen-year agreement. And they can extend it for another five years. That would be for twenty years. So fifty thousand dollars a year for twenty years is what I'm trying to do. Um, so I proposed it.
Potentially work.
I don't have any of that paper and paperwork in front of me, but it came to about that. I don't have any of that paperwork in front of me, but it came to about that amount. So they don't have, they didn't have to offer us anything. It was negotiated at fifty-five hundred a megawatt, I believe, and it could have been negotiated up to seventy-five hundred, but there was a community service agreement for SWCD and a community service agreement to the Port of Arlington as part of the negotiation. So we're just trying to put two more community service agreements in this agreement rather than Gillum County taking the money. Just add two more community service agreements so so that we can um. I think this is the way we can.
So is that the seventy-five hundred?
It, I, you know, I don't have any of those figures in front of me, so I don't want to say right now. But it would get us close to that. Yeah.
Yeah, because the first time around, they didn't, they didn't want to pay that. They wanted to pay the lower amount.
Well, agreements now for solar projects, this payment in lieu of, it's only for solar projects, the particular incentive program, which is called payment in lieu of tax. And I looked at some other counties' agreements and they show the solar project with a megawatt amount and then the battery storage project with a megawatt amount. So we just need to make sure we do that in the future just so that, you know, we don't run into this because they were, they were getting a pretty good deal and they. What what I mean is they didn't have to say anything and they came back and asked, what else can we do? So. I just want to know, I can't guarantee it. I don't know if it's going to work for them, but I proposed it. So, and this was about a month ago, long before the subject came up. So when when I brought it up and you had left, I thought, I wish you could have heard this, so.
I have a question about the stipulations. May I?
Well, you can ask. I don't think we've completely worked them out yet, but you can ask.
Well, that's the thing. I kind of just, I want my staff to hear me too. They're like locked in, but I'm just. I think it's easy when you're the teacher and you're hearing some of these public comments and things to feel like the rhetoric is that they were wanting them to do more, 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 and I just want to kind of put some healing stuff out there that we, that they're working super hard, long days already, seven to five. Just want to remind people, and what they see across the street is at the elementary school, they're working until three thirty and they have Fridays off and they have summers off. So I just want everyone to keep that in mind, that in our community, we already are providing an amazing service and I'm grateful to them and I know a lot of other parents are. And we appreciate that that the community needs more of us. I just want my staff to hear that, that they're doing an amazing job and that I hope people appreciate what they're doing already. And the the stipulations, even though they're to come, they are really vague and I hope that we can have, I mean, I don't know what the, what's the setting going to look like when we discuss the stipulations? Because I think that the community deserves to be a part of that as well.
Okay. Thank you.
What are we going to do?
Well, I think we just need to be able to talk about what 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 is coming. Would would one of you like to sit down with them and talk about, you know, what is the plan going forward for an after-school program and when might that happen? You know, is there?
I I can, I can do that. I'd like to.
Okay.
And then, like I say, I guess, you know, my biggest concern is.
Well, none of that's going to happen until their buildings build, so. Right, you can talk all you want, but until the buildings actually stand, it's kind of, it'd be kind of hard to figure out a plan going forward.
I was just asking if it has to be in that building, like are you guys set under those regulations?
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. Does your after-school program have to be in that building?
So our licenser visited us recently. I asked her these questions about like capacity and age and all of that. And she said, a lot of it's pretty simple. I just tell her we're ready to do this and she'll change the age on our license and then she'll come inspect the building and up the number and all of that for us.
And but that'll be in the new building, right?
Yeah, we can leave the premises, so the idea, you have to to basically per licensing, bring a go bag with emergency supplies if you leave the building, but that's, we have all those ready anyway. But we do have three extra rooms and I hope would be, there's that third room that that we would be able to potentially use for older kids. Make sure that the toys and the things that are in that room are age appropriate for older kids. And I would like to have like one adult that's in charge of the program and then we could have perhaps teenagers as helpers to make sure. The cost would be a little bit.
I think the question is, can you use the school gym?
Yeah.
You guys have staff, could you use the school gym?
No, no, but we could leave the premises and go to the park, library and stuff like that, but.
You couldn't go to another building?
I mean, they could go to a library or a park or they could maybe go visit the gym for like a speaker, but they couldn't.
But it can't be your official.
No, that couldn't correct. It was their licensing, we're the customer. Yeah.
And we have to have a separate license for a separate building and that's all the other can of worms, so. Skyrockets the operational expenses.
Okay. All right.
I do have a question.
Oh, yes.
And not that I have childcare or anything, but are you guys like planning on having like not being close for like when your staff is sick? I mean, I know that's like, just so you guys have enough staff that you guys don't ever have to be close.
Well, we have more staff than we did in the past and I think we've had less closures. But what happens is, I think businesses also should consider more generous PTO for families because what happens is people have a child who has sniffling nose and they look afraid across their fingers and has allergies and then they send their kids to our center. And then many people get sick. And I have some teachers who have kids in the center as well, so if their kid is sick, they have to call out. If they're sick, they have to call out. So oftentimes, we have three, four teachers sick at once and I can't, I can't promise that's not going to happen.
No, I I know, I understand. I'm just saying like if you're looking at building.
An idea.
Okay. Here, you want to like a childcare that is just, you know, I mean, I used to work at childcare and we never were close. So. That's just something I think we just have to like think about.
I I have thought about it. I don't really know who the solution is. I know that COVID changed a few things, licensing. We're not allowed to work while we're sick, so teacher is sick, I don't want them in the building. And we have to stick to a certain ratio. So I appreciate that it's an issue and I'm currently having, you know, supplying salary information about our current jurors right now, trying to justify my costs for staff, that it is. So adding additional staff, there's a challenge with that too. Need financial support to do that.
And a list of buying substitutes and people that would be willing to step in. Maybe not be on payroll, that would be great.
Yeah. Because I think that's the answer. Is they used to kind of have that.
Is there a way to have a volunteer list that I know that they have to be trained? But that would be great.
I agree. We all agree that would be great to have volunteers or people who are stepping in substitution.
Yeah.
And that's the people without jobs that are retired and have at least six months experience with that age group. But if anyone has that, like, we would love that.
It's. I I'm going to ask one question and this is getting in the weeds because we're just about ready to 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 make our motion, but it just occurred to me. So you were called Condon Childcare. Now you're called Condon Early Learning Center. Hi, there's my grandkids. What what happened with the name change? Just curious.
So this is before my time, but I'll let you speak on this, but what I will also say is our regulate, like who regulates us is Oregon Department of Early Learning and Care. In our world, it is one and the same.
Okay.
So legally, we are Condon Childcaring, E V A, Condon Early Learning Center. Children, as you mentioned, with their brains, they're learning whether we like it or not. So it's. I I hear this back and forth and hearing this for months, people have an issue with that. Please tell me what is the issue?
No, I just wondered why the name changed. I just wondered why the name changed, just out of curiosity.
A couple of years ago, after one of the grant application processes and a stipulation where, you know, it was sustainability, we had to, one year and the next year we had to bring in a consultant to go over and help us to to better the center. And the consultants that we hired, their recommendation was to change the name. We would call them Early Learning Center to get people to realize that we have this baby center. And then we truly do have curriculum and teachers and just kind of change the mindset. The conversations and comments that we've gotten over the last year, I've sat here and been like, wow, this was not what we were expecting to happen with that name change. The level of misconception has been staggering. So there's been a lot of times where I've just been like, why did we do that?
And was that the same time it changed from age twelve to age five?
No.
Okay.
It was, so that program ended for reasons that I don't, I wasn't there for that.
Is it space?
It was, first of all, it was space, but the state didn't allow us special licensing to deal with it. But then we realized that the space that we currently have and the veterinary world, we call it enrichment items. The toys for school age kids, that's not cool. But the toys and the storage, we had two storage boys that were age appropriate, was not appropriate. And a lot of the building and toys and items were being destroyed by the older kids. And it was just, it kind of created a lot of tension between the kids, staff, families, and it was just like, you know, we're not doing this because the older kids are tearing the center apart.
We have a lot of things that are made for three-year-olds. You know, and we, so having that extra space when they're separate is. You see that even with infant toddlers, so we have infants and toddlers, we have them in the same room, but we have like a gated area that at times would be completely separate. That's that's good because this, the older kids will get bigger and they're working through issues with like snatching toys and maybe hitting or dwelling. You have to keep infants safe and then you have an issue with developmental differences. And I imagine it's similar with the older kids and three-year-olds.
All right. Okay, so that's all my questions. Do you have any others? Because I I think here might be do we want to set a condition that there's monthly meetings with Gillum County to talk about how to meet the community need going forward? And to make sure line of communication is open, getting back to let's work together.
So I I just wonder if it wouldn't be more beneficial to have those talks after they get the center, the addition built? Because until then, it's. I mean, you could talk all you want, month after month, but you, there's not going to be able to be anything done about it until that center is actually standing and they have that ability to bring in after-school care and yada, yada, yada.
I I guess my only thing is, like I say, you don't even know the timeframe on finishing the expansion, but I just don't want to be in this predicament where, you know, we're just, you come to us and say, okay, we need this much. I want to be proactive and work with you guys and see, like, lack of a better word, a plan on what we're, what you're looking for us to do. Instead of, I mean, one year is four fifty, four hundred and fifty thousand and one year it's this, you know, and I understand things, but I just, there's been such a large amount invested in this. I just. I don't want it just to come to, okay, here we have one meeting to decide everything like we're trying to do.
So maybe that's why.
Yeah, it's just, I think we just need to continue to try to, you know, because, I mean, realistically, you don't know when the building will be finished, right?
No, construction, I know. Concrete's being poured today.
Yeah.
Hold it. No, I don't have an exact date on that. I will say monthly, this has taken a lot from my daily job as well. Got to be honest, it's been hard on my mental health. These meetings are very stressful and I have a lot that I that I have to catch up on later. This morning, I opened it, filled out the room at seven thirty, have room, you know, I got people telling I have to go change and and I'm here.
I came to work at five because of the same reason.
I worked somebody this afternoon and like, I I may want to focus on my job and this has been, this has been difficult monthly.
Well, I know, yeah, I totally understand. Like I say, the same thing here. I mean, it's like, we have other things that we need to focus on too. And and I think this is a, this work session was good because I think it's, it's, it's getting some questions and stuff answered. But, and I don't know if we need actually to meet monthly, but.
What about quarterly?
Yeah.
Quarterly, compromise.
I'll just point out too, in two thousand and twenty, they got a hundred and fifty thousand. In two thousand and twenty-one, they got a hundred and twenty thousand. They got, in two thousand and twenty-two, they got eighty-five thousand. They haven't always came with these big asks. So in two thousand and twenty-three was the four hundred and thirty. And now we're, and two thousand and twenty-four was four hundred and fifty with adding the extra staff for the expansion.
So they added the extra staff for the expansion?
To get ready for the expansion.
Were we also having lower asks for the COVID relief funds? There was, the year that we asked for eighty thousand, there was a, it was a state.
Okay.
Yeah. And I just wanted to point out, in last year's grant, we understood that it was a very large ask. And we made the dedication to you guys with promises, we are going to come back next year with a lower number and it was almost a hundred thousand dollars lower. And we continue to try to lower that number. We're working on certain institutions in place and just working our best to lower those costs. And I think this year's ask, although it's so high, it is proof that we are making the motions towards those costs.
Okay. Oh, go ahead.
What is, help any to keep those lines of communication up so going to the county court liaison?
Yeah, or, right, that would be great. Thank you. Very good suggestion.
Well, I think that, isn't there certain grant reporting requirements they have to provide?
We would listen, but yes, July thirty-first is when the final reports are due for everybody.
Right.
Well, that's like I say, whatever that plan is, just something going forward so we're not in this predicament where you're coming today and worrying if you're going to get it or not.
Right.
Trying to figure it out real quick. I don't want to do that.
Surprise too, so I think communication is the right answer.
Yeah.
So. What about quarterly meetings? Well, you feel that would be fair. Okay. So. You had said you want to do it. Did who, which of you two would be interested in meeting with them quarterly so that we can know what status of of this is before it comes to us such as this?
Well, I think Grant voiced that he could do it.
If you would like to do it.
I I I will do it. Yeah, like I say, I I have some questions and want to get to them and and, yeah.
Yeah, right.
And like I say, the whole thing is try to try to improve this.
Right, okay, all right.
So can I make a motion?
Yes.
I moved to approve the C E L C Operational Support Grant for two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand with quarterly reporting.
And we have a way to fund if we lower that million dollars, we're we're in agreement, okay?
We'll come out of the capital investments.
All right, I will second the motion.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year twenty-six Condon Early Learning Center Operational Support Grant in the amount of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars with the condition of quarterly reporting. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And Commissioner Wilkins, did you want to be the liaison with?
Yeah, yeah, I'll I'll do that and I'll reach out to them and deal with them.
Good. All right. Sorry, Early Learning Center.
Yeah.
You called.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is Consider Approval of Library Director Updated Position Description.
That's the one I missed last.
Okay, just a formality. Okay, great.
So the only thing that changed was saying the salary. I moved to approve the updated library director position description as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been approved to, excuse me, it's been moved, um, and seconded to approve the updated library director position description. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, um, Consider Adoption of Resolution R twenty twenty-five ten, Declaring County Vehicle as Surplus.
So which one?
This is the, um, two thousand, I'm going to let the sheriff speak. Can you talk a little bit about this? Two thousand eleven Chevy Equinox.
And I have an employee that's on accommodated, uh, special accommodation due to pregnancy and we didn't have her in a patrol car. So that was the car assigned and so I'm drawn with it. And it's got a hundred and forty-three thousand miles on it. Had the other car fixed for over a hundred dollars or whatever. It's a older car, but a lot less miles.
There's another car available.
That's the one she's, her.
And that one is the Impala? Okay. So, part of this too, is that not, not this vehicle, but um, our victim's advocate had a car that was going to be surplus. So we just checked to see how much it would cost. The mileage was low. It didn't cost that much to fix it rather than buying another vehicle. So this is what hopefully will get us through this this time of someone else needing a car for a bit of time, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
This got noticed. Uh, she will need that car. But it just came to take, uh, till August thirty.
All right. Right. Um, so any discussion about the surplus vehicle?
So we're ready to get rid of it.
To get rid of it.
No, I don't have.
I'll, I'll move to adopt Resolution R twenty twenty-five dash ten, Declaring County Vehicle, the twenty-eleven Chevy Equinox uh, vehicle as surplus as presented.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution R twenty twenty-five ten, declaring a two thousand eleven Chevy Equinox county vehicle as surplus. On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Is there anything else, um, for the good of the order? Nothing?
I don't have anything.
No, I'm, I think DeWena and I are going to be meeting with the California OHA to start going through some of the triennial review and the WIC stuff.
We have County College at the end of the month. I have asked for a potential opportunity to do something else because I may have a grandbaby coming during that time. So, um, they're going to let me make work up if I have to miss that, but I'm going to register for it, I think, and plan on going. Um, my grandchild is down to weekly appointments for finding out each week when she is having the baby, but she was in the hospital yesterday. Um, but it's going to be released this afternoon. So it's kind of this month where she's at eight months now. So everything's safe, everything's safe.
Maybe sooner than later.
Um, hurts her blood pressure. Uh, so we'll see. But if the plan is that she's induced July third, the night of July third, so we could have a fourth of July baby. So, yeah. We're working on contracts. We're working on the surplus list, um, for the grain lab. We are working on childcare, the grants, and that's been what the month has been, the last two weeks, I guess.
Our audit's coming.
Our audit, okay. All right. Way ahead of time. Yeah, good. Thank you.
You're on it.
Good.
We are on it.
Go ahead, Grant.
I, I don't have anything. I have a couple of things that I'm working on and.
Okay, nothing to, nothing to report.
Nothing to report right now.
So the North Corps passed its budget at, is it a five percent? Ask from the counties instead of the ten we originally.
I, not, I know, I meant, yeah, I thought it was last I heard was ten.
You know, Gary?
I thought the budget.
We did, but.
Lasco and Hood River were really wanting to pay five. Yeah.
I thought there was a meeting coming up this month on it, but. Adopted. That's what I.
Oh, I didn't know if it passed our budget committee last month or not.
Okay, I will follow up. I'll find out very soon.
One other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, evening meetings. Do, are either of you interested in implementing an evening meeting? Like every other month or? What are your thoughts on that? So that more of the public could attend?
I definitely don't want to do it in the wintertime.
Okay.
Summer is going to be hard for me.
Okay. All right.
But I, driving back and forth in the dark after.
Yeah. Okay. You, you're not interested. Okay. Yeah.
It would give more public input, um, for the people.
Yeah, I, I, I can understand that, but I don't know.
Work after hours or they can flex their time.
I guess, you know, there's, we have people attend that can, I get that, but I think also, you know, the Zoom is also available too, but I guess my first session, I'm, yeah, there's just so much, there's so, so many meetings already. I don't know. I was.
Okay.
I don't think city council lasts as long as some of our court, they don't have as
much. All right.
At times, I don't think.
Thank you. Is there any other business? The meeting's coming up, our next county court meeting, whoops, is, um, June eighteenth in Arlington and we have a July eighth. July second or July eighth.
And that's evening, right?
Yep. So then, yeah, so county court, July second would be here. Then the eighth is a strategic plan round table. Yes. So, right. Thank you for everybody who attended. Meeting's adjourned.